Good evening, everybody. Please join us for the I'm calling meeting to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I'm calling the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Aaron, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Dittrick.
Here.
Councilmember Koyner.
Here.
Councilmember Sherwin.
Here.
Everybody's present. Are there any changes to the agenda that you should be aware of or?
I have no changes.
And councilmember, seven changes. With that, I'll take a motion and second to approve the agenda. I move to approve the agenda. Also. Linda, yes, Ryan, Bill, Joe, and Mary Ann.
Yes.
All right, next, ever public input period, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Okay?
Jay Schmidt, seven fifty, Ridgewood Drive, Manchester Island. I was asked to come up here and speak about a couple items. One item is the street cleaning machine. There's some people feel that's a lot of money for things. Our overlords and we, I got the paper here from the people that ran for office. And shows what they're stood for. And what we're, everybody's gonna cut back on spending, save money. All this. And it's not really happening. There's no debt being paid down. We owe ten million plus. And I never hear it mentioned at the meetings. I watch all the meetings. There's a lot of people watching meetings. So then you'll compare yourself with other towns. But we're doing good because other towns, well, other towns had their meetings on the internet for many years. And we didn't have them. So don't compare yourself with other towns. We're Manchester. And there's a lot of people in town are concerned about the property taxes. So it's time for the council to take a stand here and vote down some of this spending. I know new stuff is nice. I'd like to get some new stuff, but when I get something, I pay for it. Around here, you just keep adding to the debt. Our country's been doing that for many years. Now we're thirty-seven trillion in debt. And our town's the same way. We used to be two sixteen years ago, eighteen years ago. And your answer to the debt is we can borrow up to twenty-five million. We're in good shape. But does that ten ever get paid down? So I'd like to see the council think about this vote tonight. For the street cleaning, it's three hundred thousand dollars. If you're not in agreement with that, that could be a half million off the debt. And there's people feel like I do, and there's people, oh, that don't hurt. It's not our money. But here's what you guys ran on. Your picture's here and what you ran on. And all concerned about money. I don't see much of it down here. I sure wish you guys could vote that down tonight and make a lot of people happy because we got a lot of calls in our house. There are seven hundred views of that meeting last. That makes regular meeting. There's gonna be a lot of people watching tonight. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anybody else want to approach the council tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item here. Our consent agenda. First item tonight is I need approval of the minutes from the April twenty-eighth regular city council meeting and the minutes from the May fifth special city council meeting and committee as a whole. Next, I need a motion to approve resolution forty-two approving the bills. I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of city reports from park and rec and the board of adjustments. We need a motion to approve a liquor license. It's a renewal for Fiesta Cancun. And also for, is that a new license for New deal?
It's technically a renewal of their new location, so it referenced their old address, but it's for the seventeen eleven North Second Street. They just sell the native wine is what it's for.
Okay. Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution forty-three amending the salaries, and I believe that's our summer help. And we have an equipment operator who's in a bump, has a bump up, and circulation clerks at the library. Next, I need a motion to approve, I'm asking you to appoint Nancy Ayler to the P N Z Planning and Zone Commission. Tanya Bradley had to resign as she moved out of the area. Or out of town, I should say. She's still in Manchester. Then I need a motion to approve Kirk Michaels invoice for engineering services completed on the airport runway in an amount of ten thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. I need a motion to approve the payment per gram for their invoice of twenty thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and that's for engineering services on Anderson Street in the downtown stormwater study. Need a motion then also to approve the payment to per gram. Sorry. I'm locked up. I need a motion to approve claims totaling, a motion to review the decision by the Board of Adjustments to approve the request of Larry Brensman for the property of one hundred and thirty-one East Acre Street, Hesperians. And then I need a motion to review the decision of the Board of Adjustment to approve the request of Lucas Elsburn for the property at three sixteen East Union Street. I need a motion to approve resolution forty-five waiving the right to review the Wessels plant. And a motion to approve resolution forty-six waiving the right to review the Terrell plant. And with that, that's my last one. I will take a motion and a second we'll open it up for discussion. All right, anybody have any questions or comments or concerns? Where's that Tarot property located?
It's by the brick and mill.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't, I couldn't tell really well.
It's hard to tell.
Yeah, okay. All right, hearing nothing, Mary Ann, yes, Joe, Bill, Brian, and Linda.
Yes.
Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. We'll go on to our regular agenda items. And first, tonight, we have Lea Blanco, that always butchered at me, I'm so sorry. From ECIA to talk about the lead mitigation program.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, Stan Lo Bianco with the East Central People Governmental Association, your five county cog. I'm, I'm here, I'm often here, I'm a coach for the hometown pride committee most recently, worked on some dog track pride checks, I'm working with him and everyone here on stormwater mitigation with the Flood Coalition. But this evening, I'm here as a project manager of our lead mitigation and healthy homes program. We have applied, Manchester has been a part of the program, and the county of Delaware added for two of the programs. We're finishing up our five county program, and we just received money this spring for a new seven county program, so we're looking for your support or agreeing to the match that is required by, by the federal program to do that. The lead and healthy homes program is, is what it says, it is focusing on health and safety of our families, particularly our young children. And we do lead mitigation and abatement work. We also do some healthy homes work that isn't associated with lead and healthy homes, but there's a couple of things. With the program, the home needs to be at least built in nineteen seventy-eight or earlier. There has to be a presence of a child under the age of six. And they have to be low to moderate income. And in Delaware County, that means a family of four would have to be making seventy-seven thousand five hundred or less. Or a grandparent say that has a visiting child would be able to make fifty-four thousand two hundred and fifty or less to qualify for the program. Those are the, basically, the three programs. And understand that we've been before the council before with this request. The federal government requires a two thousand dollar match for every project. That hasn't changed from the first two programs. However, unlike the previous programs, or we have had a recreate, an increase, excuse me, of total projects. So with the lead mitigation program, used to be a maximum of twenty thousand, now it's thirty thousand. Healthy Homes has gone from five thousand to fifteen thousand dollars that we can do projects up to, and so that makes forty-five thousand dollars in projects and and just so that you know, our average project in the last two cycles has been twenty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We do feel that the two thousand dollar investment that is required and that we're asking you for is, is a nice piece of leverage to get these home improvements. Now, in, in front of you where I passed out, we just three samples that, yeah, in that packet of ECIA or Essential Governmental on the front just have photos of three projects that were done in Manchester in the past programs. The facades are, when we do the mitigation on the side, and is always kind of a wow factor, so you have a couple of projects there. But we also interior sometimes, sometimes we simply do interior if the outside doesn't test positive for lead. So we're included the appealing bathroom on another property that we did in Manchester, and you see the after photo of what that what that bathroom was like. And we're pretty happy with, you know, the program we work with. Our current program or the one we just got funded is five point seven five million dollars. Now, understand, we've gone beyond the five counties. We, we expect probably Delaware County and particularly Manchester, because you have been a leader, especially per capita. You may be the leader in per capita investment in that project or finished project. And we expect that to go down a little bit. We budgeted over every year for the four-year period. Four projects in Delaware County, we know that a good portion, we have done some almost in every community, at least two in every community. But Manchester still has had the predominance of them. So we are looking for that support again. Again, the samples you have, one's on Gay Street, one's on Liberty, one's on Howard Street. Also, you may recall, it was about a year ago, right now, the, the folks from Washington felt so positive about it, but they brought someone in from the Twin Cities as well as someone from Washington. We joined them for a bit of a celebration with some other community services up in the park, and we had a successful program. I don't know, in front of you is that letter of request. We need an answer within six weeks to solidify the program and, and let them know in from Washington that we would like to move forward in Manchester. So I don't know if we were probably not looking for a decision tonight, or maybe, I mean, it's
Again, it's a continuation of the program we've done with ECIA. We've been averaging, you know, not more than ten projects.
No. We did budget twenty thousand dollars for this. We have thirty thousand in this current fiscal year's budget, and we did budget twenty thousand for our next fiscal year. It hasn't, you know, we haven't necessarily met the budgeted number each year because it depends on the projects that come in and, you know, the timeframe for getting those completed.
Yeah, and I do have a few more specific. We have none ongoing right now, and the five county program isn't over actually until December first, twenty twenty-six. But we've got the projects pretty much scheduled out to the end of this calendar year. There are none in Manchester, two Manchester addresses. But they're all actually all in the county, so the county actually takes care of that two thousand. So we would have eighteen more to do on the current program that you've already supported. But we, but they overlap a bit, so we've already started that seven county program. I think you're, you're right. I think in six years, we've done thirty-four projects, so that would, I, I think it's been six years, or maybe five years since we still have it a year to go, or, you know, after, after this year, so we are definitely averaging less than.
Mitch, did you say we used out of the last one, the last budget? Have we used any out of what we budgeted?
Well, the fund that we played for, paid for it out of is that Fund One Sixty-One Acquisition Demolition.
Right.
So two things happen in that fund, one, the, the grant match for these programs, but then when we acquire a nuisance house, like the one we just sold on Gay Street. So once we've acquired one of those, then we, like, if there's mowing, the closing costs, all those things come out of, out of that one, one, one sixty-one. But then we also deposit the money that we receive when we sell those properties back into that one sixty-one fund. So this year, I did check, this year we budgeted thirty thousand, we've spent not quite eighteen thousand, and a portion of that, sixteen thousand of that has been for the, the grants, so we've done basically about eight houses with that, and, you know, the remainder well more than a thousand, around two thousand, has been on that, I think it was that Gay Street house that we just sold to S and P Promotions.
And these grants can be used for not just homeowners, but
It can be used for renters, but you should know, your money goes to the homeowners because the rentals, that two thousand dollars has to come from the landlord.
Right.
And also, we, I said forty-five thousand as a max, but actually, we can ask for a high dollar, and I think there's been three instances in Manchester that we can, and we typically get approved, we budgeted for more, but you have to ask if you're below above that maximum.
And the nice part of this program is that it helps those houses that are older in the community, so, you know.
Right.
Those, some of those that might be starter homes or, or ones where some of our elders we are that might need a little assistance. So it is nice that way. It's going towards existing housing stock.
I also think lead mitigation was just huge.
No.
It, it is, and, and we, right to the top, if, if a child has already tested at a high level, E B L level, elevated blood level, we put them at the very top of our list, because it takes a while to get through a process. Sometimes we get it done in two and a half months. Sometimes it takes six to eight months, depending on the size of the project and what we're looking at, but we'll move those elevated blood levels right to the top.
Good. I think it's an important program.
What is the cap that we have on now?
Basically ten, two thousand dollars base.
Twenty thousand each year?
We haven't ever hit that.
I don't believe you have.
But, but there is that potential, and that's why we, you know.
So we're interested in continuing our program. I need a motion to
Yep. We do have time, the council's not ready to make a decision, but we did budget for it, so.
With the program, what you guys do, and you're making houses safer for people to live in, knowing that not everybody in this, in this city has an abundance of money to do repairs to their house. And I think what you guys do is an amazing job. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to continue to do this program with that twenty thousand dollar cap that we already have in.
Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, next. Uh, next, we have a motion to approve resolution forty-four, approving the control services agreement. I'm gonna let you speak to this, Tim, before we
Chief James and I met with Ron Gilbrand with Critter Gators, talking a little bit about operating our pound for us, contracting with them to do so. He is in agreement that he would do so with twenty-five dollars an hour. That is for maintenance at the pound. We do need to get this, be scheduled for if he's trapping ground dogs or something along those lines. So we need to get, that's something else, that's outside of the maintaining dogs and cats and cleaning the balance, stuff like that. But typically, we'll, we'll work with him. Chief, do you have anything you want to add on this?
No, we'll try to utilize it as minimal as possible, again. We don't want to send anybody on that, but when we talk about it, it's just, again, that being this portion. Coming in at these now or do they, who do you handle about, be married or give abortions and that, so. Maintain that for us and work through it.
We won't need our animal control person then that we advertised for?
No, this would be
On the table was an updated agreement. I had taken a stab at the first one, and this one is with Jim corrections to it, so we will attach a schedule of the fees, but.
But basically, if somebody's got a wild dog or loose dog, we still contact the city or contact?
Dispatch, no badge. Depending upon the scenario, either being an officer that goes out for a visit or Critter Gators, depending upon the scenario, let's examine.
He may not be available immediately, if that was the only thing, because he had an independent contractor on that, so he's off doing some other tasks. But it's a fairly open agreement, because you've been terminated in thirty days, so we had the fee struck down, but we didn't spend a lot of time putting it in detail day to day what he's supposed to do. He's got experience at it, and it's either gonna work or it won't, and there's not a lot of risk in it, it was a thirty-day agreement.
And he has license. I'll make a motion to adopt.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right, next, review the audit for fiscal year ending in June. We're at the end of May fourth. And we've got Steve, is it?
No, Steve's not here.
Steve's not here?
He provided the audit. If we have countless questions, we can direct it to him.
Boys, or what we can.
A lot of the the end is really the meter that where they kind of identify the issues. Most are similar to what we did each year, the segregation duties, which I think every city in Iowa gets because nobody can staff enough people to to meet the requirements for segregation duties. The preparation of financial statements, when you have an auditor do the whole audit, we don't employ our own auditor with the city. We contract out for that, so that's where they make that note. The meter deposits, Julie has been working to give a solution to balance those. And I think we've got something implemented that it's gonna work well going forward and should meet the requirements of the audit. The other things, I think, were tip-related items, and those were one was related to the property tax bill that was passed and the change in valuations as a result of that. The other one was certification on a bond issue. I didn't certify the interest, I just certified the principal over to the auditor, and I should have certified both the principal and interest. And then he disagrees with what I show for the balance of debt on the annual urban renewal report compared to what he has. We're close. You know, we'll just say we're at a disagreement on that, so. But otherwise, pretty routine items. They do a nice job. They are deciding whether they come from Des Moines, so they are reviewing all their clients right now. There aren't a lot of people that do city audits anymore. And we may have to go out for an R F Q for a different auditing firm. If they decide they can't make it up here, it's not a bad thing to do, on occasion to go out for an R F auditors. So that may be something that you'll see happening in the, in the coming months. The hard part is finding firms that do it. Goslings got out of it, Milestones doesn't want to do it, because we had Goslings for a while, and they were really good. We have Hunt Camp Kruger, they got out of it. So there are a few firms that do it. Problem is with scarcity, prices are crazy. We'll send it to the state auditor for them to bid on it as well, but a lot of times we get the reply back from them, they're, they're too busy and just can't fit us into the schedule. But we, we will send it to them. Their audits are always very thorough. So we will let you know more as we find out more from, from Ruff Gertis auditing firm.
Yeah, from what I read through the audit, it's almost the exact same thing every year at the end. Small things that are segregation.
Yeah. Yeah, and we haven't had to do a single audit, which is when you spend so much federal money.
It's sort of fifty thousand dollars in a calendar year.
Then it gets a little more in-depth when they do those audits, but we haven't had that happen for which saves us money on the audit, but also time, so.
As far as the segregation duties, the only way to get around that is more employees, right?
Correct.
Just a bunch of staff, and then
One person taking in the utility bills.
Right. I don't think I've seen an audit in any town. Right.
I don't even know if Des Moines is.
Yeah, I don't know if they do either. Well, if they don't find something, then they probably feel like they failed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Two people should look at every transaction is what they want, and even in Des Moines, as big as it is, you can't have two people look at every trans.
Yeah, we try and segregate as much as we can. We have two signers on our checks, which I think is a good, and we only, we don't use, like, facsimile signatures, it's a signature. We have the council looking over accounts payable on top of department heads, me, Laura, Tim. Payroll, Julie and I split those duties, so there's two people in there. So we, we, we do the best we can with the staff we have to try and spread it out, because it's also a good C Y A for us, you know, to, to have multiple people looking at things.
A good cross-training.
Yeah, very good cross-training, absolutely.
Any other, we just need a motion to approve the there's valid receipt of it. I hope it's something
I would like to acknowledge the receipt of the audit.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that.
Any further questions? Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have the street sweeper replacement, I believe, was at the, committee as a whole that we discussed this. Jason brought some information. I know, I guess we'll look at one of the street sweepers. I think Linda and Mary Ann got to see both of them. You want to just bring everybody up to speed on going on with this?
This is Corey, he's with the Armor Equipment. And he's the representative for the Tim Go Sweeper that we're looking at. I kind of did a quick, brief rundown of what the hours and stuff, and the schedule of the sweeper is.
Thank you for doing that.
Yep, and then basically, his, Corey presented us with, with the quote for the two ninety-one, whatever, and change for the, for the sweeper. Can, that's, if anybody else has got any questions as far as sweeper, I can try to answer them as good as I can, I guess, but.
As far as the parts and house service? That's our own employees, you want that?
That's mainly just like oil changes and
Change of route, that's just the parts, that's not the labor, so to say.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's just Chad, and like Chad doing whatever work that he's done on the day and night stuff, yeah. The, the big number up above was from that April of twenty-one, you know, forward for service calls on the things that were.
Is that mostly the electrical?
Mostly the electrical stuff that we're trying to, you know, trying to get our way to work through, so, yeah.
Of course, your view, Corey, right?
Yeah.
On an average, what do you get as a street sweeper last for a city?
I mean, it can depend. I think obviously that, that's, you know, the number he's at, you know, almost thirty thousand dollars for repairs over the last forty years is pretty outrageous. I think the biggest thing obviously is the chassis, you know, I don't think it's a lot of the body, but the chassis has been kind of a nightmare. Generally, what we see is, you know, ten years. After that ten years, when you start to put a lot more money into it. But, you know, I've, I've got ten go sweepers out there that are, you know, older than I am, so. It's, it's all about the maintenance, it's all about you know, like I said, with the issue that they're having with the chassis, that's just something you can't get around. It's kind of like a lemon, right, you know? And it, you know, what happens in three, four years, we're sure, simply putting that, that thirty thousand dollars in. But generally, we see, you know, ten to twelve years.
Yeah, I guess that's if we're looking at trading the vehicle, sweeper to, our street sweeper's in perfect condition, except for a little rust here and there. You let me do this, Alan. It's also the problem that you get into, like you said, once vehicles start getting a certain age, we are dealing with a vehicle right now. We might be putting our second transmission in at four weeks, so.
Right.
I mean, it's a hundred thousand miles on the vehicle, do you keep it? You know, they're also telling us our rear end's leaking a little bit on it, do you keep the vehicle forever? Keep sicking dollars into it, keep sicking dollars, and then hopefully, the day you need it, it runs.
Right.
Or all of a sudden, you come out and go, jeez, another vehicle's gone. Well, that's because the rear end went up. So now you're, you're down without a vehicle, and you need to get stuff done. They're kind of hard to just go to Palmer Hardware in town and rent a street sweeper to do the entire town. For three weeks or four weeks until you get the vehicle fixed, so.
I, I would say you guys, in terms of the maintenance you have had on your current sweeper, is, is definitely way above than what you should be. And if it's gonna continue that, you're just gonna dump a lot of money into something that's already eight years old, or nine, or however old it is.
Well, it's not gonna get any better as far as the maintenance. I mean, once you start nickel and dime, nickel and dime, don't stop, build a vehicle or whatever it is.
Right. Right, for example, since, since twenty twenty-one, um. We have a pretty new, uh, ten go out and alligator that we've had there since twenty twenty-one. I, I guarantee. We haven't been out there for any major, you know, repairs, you know, you're, you got your normal stuff, you got your rooms and your curtains. Um, one thing is too, is you guys run a regenerative air sweeper, um. We, we've got for a temp go and they invented the regenerative air sweeper. So that's all they focus on, they mastered it, they perfected it. That's all they put their work into, whereas an Elgin, they offer different types of sweepers, so. The bread and butter would be a mechanical sweeper, which they make the best mechanical sweeper out there. They also make the regenerative bears and make the vacuum, so, um. You can wrap the shirt knowing that we have created or manufactured what we believe. The best regenerative air sweeper and that's all we've got our focus on, so. Um, not saying that things, it's a piece of equipment, everything to prepare it, right, but, um. I, I believe you'll have a lot less than what you're dealing with now.
Do you have any other questions?
Do you ever see them coming to this price again?
Uh, they're just gonna come more and more expensive, uh, actually, so that one that I, that is on the council right now is one that we. Had delivered three or four months ago, um, so we ordered it probably a year before that, uh, told Jason if I were to price that one out right now. Not to mention that we're getting hit with tariffs on everything come June first, even more. Um, you're about twenty thousand dollars more than what it is now. You know, what, what I, what we do just for a, a brand new machine that's been sitting on our lot, then. You were asking for the first demo to have it, I mean, we dealt with it a couple of times, some, some off areas in eastern Iowa, but. They're just gonna get more expensive, obviously, they're just like everything else. But, uh, who knows when those tariffs are gonna go, you know?
Jason, since this, uh. Since the repairs have been done. Have, have, has it acted up at all lately?
Um, it's kind of a continual thing, I mean, there's, there's usually a check, we have a check engine light, which we think is probably through that, that whole wiring system. Um, but as far as running it, it's ran, I mean, it's running fine, there's no. Issues there, it's basically what I think I showed anybody that was down that day, kind of the electrical part of it. That's, that's the nightmare of anything, so, but, I mean, yeah, as of right now, the machine is operational and, and I mean, if. We're gonna, it's gonna be business as normal tomorrow, if this doesn't happen, I mean, it's, it, you know, we're gonna, and if it breaks, we're gonna fix it and move on, I mean, that's, so.
And again, we're.
Yeah, about two years. About two years ahead, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And part of that, under scheduling is because of the equipment replacement schedule we got. We have a slot available this year without another heavy or large piece of equipment we're looking to purchase. We pushed it out two years, we're getting to that point where, but two thousand eight, uh, backhoe. Twenty years at that age, and then we have another dump truck that'll be fifteen years, and those are the schedules we start looking at replacing them. Um, so. We're just trying to schedule or slot things where we average about three hundred thousand dollars a year in equipment placement purchases. Uh, so this is the year you didn't see a lot of, or next fiscal year you didn't see a lot of pickups coming through, um, like we did this last year, that is correct, that's weird. Uh, just trying to keep our replacement schedule there while we're just spending X amount of money.
Yeah, they, uh, in loader and, uh, backhoe and those things are all kind of coming roughly at the same time, that, like I said, he says, there's a slot here now that's, you know. Where it fits in the, that too, so.
And I see. Yeah, this is being paid for, we are not borrowing for this, this is being paid for from the street improvement fund and the roadies tax fund.
So we have thirty thousand dollars in repairs a year on this unit?
It's, uh, thirty thousand, insert, well, it was thirty, yeah, since two thousand.
Right, and then you're figuring it's gonna go up twenty thousand if you ordered it now?
If I ordered that exact machine, spec to exactly where it's at, yeah, it's about twenty thousand more. Another thing you consider too, and they didn't really, you know, um, think about this, but their demo machine actually has like a catch basin cleaner, um, tube off the back.
Yeah.
Um, which will also save them from taking out the jetback, um, another very expensive piece of equipment, right? So we could save some hours on that too and, and get the job done efficiently. Um, but yeah, if I were to, to put in an order for a temp go right now, um, it would take about, you know, ten to twelve months to get it and it would be. You know, um, about twenty thousand dollars. More, another thing is to think about, which we really hope would never happen, but when the tariffs come and they say, oh, it's actually gonna be four or five thousand dollars more than. And that's something that we don't wanna do, we don't wanna come back and ask for more money, so we were lucky enough to where we have, um. Ordered pieces of machines and, um. You know, we got them and we got them at the price of twenty twenty-four, twenty-three, we're. Um, we're not dealing with those, um, it's helped us out, you know, some other towns too, so.
So what I'm gathering is that. If we don't pull this through. The money. And we order this unit. And we're gonna have to order it a year from now to have it in two years essentially to get it. And we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at. A minimum of twenty-five thousand dollar hike between our repairs that we're putting into it and the twenty thousand dollar going up on the unit if tariffs don't come. What, well, if they do.
And they generally. Across the board, what you see with our equipment is every year on the beginning of the year, there's about a three percent increase.
But yeah, it could be up to forty to forty-five thousand.
I feel we're just moving money from one account to another to pay for this, and what if something else breaks on that? We really need, you know, we may have to borrow money for that. So I. I'm not in agreement with it at all, and I don't think the terrorists are gonna stick around forever either. So what account are we talking about?
Well, we'll move it.
From our views to.
But that's what we had talked about when we were budgeting, right, right?
Yeah, I would really hope the terrorists don't stick around, I think one thing is though is. That kind of scary is. When you look at those, you know, like a truck manufacturer like Freightliner, you know, they raise it up for the tariffs, do you think they're gonna really go back? Probably not, you know, they're just gonna stick with that price, cause that's what people, you know, people are gonna pay it because that's what they are, and then when they need to put it there, they need to put it themselves. It might not go up a ton and the terrorists might go away. But we're probably not gonna go back on price, cause that's what I'm seeing.
We don't have to look too far, I mean, we can look at pickup trucks and look and see what they've done in the last ten years and what the pricing has been and stuff, and they've not come back down, nor have they ever.
Yes. It's kind of wild.
Right.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, to go ahead with the purchase of the twenty twenty-five Tico sweeper demo unit. For the special price for the demo unit of two hundred ninety-one thousand four ninety-five. With the trade.
Can we negotiate that down to some time?
You're also the wrong guy.
I'll start. Any other comments?
I'm just afraid it's gonna keep going up and up and up and then. Eventually our sweeper's not gonna be worth any. And then we're gonna be stuck paying at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Brian, did you wanna add anything? I know that you were. On the fence the other day when you were talking about it.
Um. No, I'm, I'm gonna be a no. I'm gonna be a no, um, and the reason being is, uh, one, it's two years I have to go. Two, um, I deal with machines that are, you gotta limp long. And yes, you might have a big blur where you have to stick some money into it, but I got a machine now that should have died a long time ago and it is running by making me money. Um, the other, the other thing I look at is, um. This is a huge investment for a, uh, basically a machine that does one, one thing, um. You know, we got some stuff coming down the pipe that I think along with, uh, the K ninety, that some other stuff with fire department. That I would, we'd really like to allocate. The money in doors. So with that, I mean, I'm.
Then were we able to take, fund out road use and pay for stuff like the squad cars and. Anything required for?
Road use tasks ones have to be used for street improvements, like street equipment only, only. And that's because that funds come from the fuel sales tax, you know, registration fees.
Hey, so any good questions or comments, or are we ready to put it to a vote? All right, Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Brian?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
I say yes just for the simple fact that we're in line and I'm getting. In order to protect the taxpayers' money, I think this is the best direction to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, I don't know, this probably has to do with Jason, well, again, um, we're gonna. Asphalt, asphalt street projects, um, cities, um, worked with the city council budget fifty thousand is fiscal year, or fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for some small asphalt street overlay projects. And you wanna address those, I know we talked about which streets we thought were the most critical at this time.
If you don't mind, I don't. Uh, working at New Street from Prospect Street to Claire Avenue, uh, you know, the base bit of thirty-five thousand, four hundred thirty-eight dollars, fifty-eight cents. And then we also talked about doing Claire Avenue, Sherman Avenue, Doctor Street, eighteen thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars, forty-eight cents. One of the things. When we talked about this committee meeting, we did not. Remember was, there's an additional cost for adjusting fixtures, manholes and valve boxes. There are four manholes and three valve boxes in those two segments. That would increase that price by another fifty-four hundred dollars, but total to fifty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars. Staff is looking at this in order for us to get back to that fifty thousand dollar budget we, we looked at. As much as we would like to do Claire ahead at this time, we're inclined to just keeping it New Street. From Prospect Street to Claire Avenue, that'll come into about thirty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, somewhere in that range. That keeps us within fifty thousand dollar budget, um, we know we have some other areas that we'll address later on, but, um. You know, with, with the cap that we have, we're talking about, let's just do the one street.
And what's the toll for that, for manholes on that, or is that included?
That's included, that fifty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars includes everything.
Okay, I'm talking about New Street and Prospect Street to Clara.
Okay, there's.
Just the thirty-five.
That's, uh, no, I'm sorry, we have to add two manholes.
And one valve box.
Yeah, so that's eighteen hundred plus six hundred, it's twenty-four hundred dollars on top of that thirty. Uh, five thousand, so. Let's just go thirty-nine thousand.
Okay. Right, thank you.
I drove the street. Um, I, I drove all of them and, um. New Street does need to be done, I think that with it. Being right there in front of the school, I think it's really important that we be able to clean that well. And in order to do that, I think it needs to be in good shape. Um, I have some concerns about. How rough it is, um, with kids driving it and with. The concept of trying to keep it clean and so that's. It's safe for kids, you know, um, so I would like to see New Street done. Clara is also one that needs to be done, I will admit that. I know that there's a lot of traffic on it because of the, um. Oh, it used to be the Catholic Center down there, I don't know what it's called anymore, kind of yelled me out, wouldn't.
I'd say changed. I don't, I don't think they've been on it anymore.
No, they don't, I think Sue owns it, but you have to remember what it's called, it was called the Hawk Center for a while.
It does, but I think it's still.
Okay, the Hawk Center, okay, so I know that there's traffic because of that, I also know that there's traffic because of the girls. Complex being right there for the softball. My thought was though, with the softball, at least that's not done in the winter time. And so it's not as important that that be cleared. Um, as well, you know, yes, we still want it cleared because there's still buses going through there, but between the two, I really felt like New Street was the one that we have to capitalize on. Because of where it is, there's a huge amount of traffic that goes down that street.
I agree, yeah.
They're missing.
No, you're good, yeah, but I, I agree on that, that's, and when we moved up to Clara, like I was saying the other day, it was. It was closed and I thought it would land fairly close to that fifty, which after the adjustments were obviously over by close to ten thousand, so I, I recommend even more just doing the new. We stick that. Ten thousand. Somewhere else, I mean, uh, you know, I'm.
Well, we can add small projects if we need to or whatever, I'm sure there's enough projects around.
Yeah.
You know, we also can pass some patches we're gonna do upon Hansel nine three, but then.
But it would give us.
Yeah.
Back building to do that, so. So I'm gonna make a motion that we only do new streets. With this project.
When they do that asshole, again, put some speed bumps in there, slow.
Actually, it's does just the opposite, Joe, get us moving and they go faster, that's, yeah.
I'll, I'll second that, uh, motion, Mary Ann put on there about New Street only on that.
Yes, no further discussion or comments? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Uh. So Jim, do you have some updates for us on these properties?
We have one property that we, uh, we've had this policy, we want the fine even if they clean up. And we had one where we imposed the fine, the court did impose the judgment and they did event, they did clean it up, so we were good on that one. We have one just recently, we received the order to go in and clean up the property on. Free on Lincoln Street. We'll have authority to go in and get that done. Uh, two. Two others that, uh, have cleaned up after we got the judgment, so. And I believe we just filed a couple of new ones. That's off Friday when I was with everybody, so I go through. Said I haven't, I don't, nobody's been served, but that's where we are right now.
Okay. Perfect.
It's good to see some of these falling off the list.
Yeah.
I see the property north Frank and that's coming along too with. At least a new steel on it.
A lot across from the library.
Yeah, they, they have new steel on it and they are going to put new siding on, I understand.
I got pictures of ones potentially for both like over here. But that's all I have on the, we just have the four active.
Thank you, Jim. All right, uh, you need to go first, Sam? You don't have anything tonight, okay, Sam?
So we have a few projects ongoing. Anderson Street, started former design, then I made the city staff on sometime late June to kind of review thirty percent plans, can I ask any additional questions that we have as we kind of get that in the design? Um, lines been outside and reviewing things, determine if they're gonna stay aerial or go underground, um. The, they kind of initially, there was a big push after the race, they'll be going underground, but they've just kind of backed off on that a little bit and they look at things a little closer now to determine if they wanna go underground or not. So, um, we'll kind of be in contact with them and pass along the other utilities if they're going on relocating underground or whatnot, they gotta coordinate with, um, all the utilities out there. Um, downtown stormwater study project, kind of got that started. Working on getting the base model set up. Um, so we can kind of get everything lined up to make sure that what the model's showing on existing conditions that kind of matches what we think has actually happened, um. It is actually happening. East Main Street, the city should receive the final reimbursement check from the DOT at the end of the month. And then that will be, otherwise that one's done, just waiting to get that final, final reimbursement check. And then West Marion Street Bridge, we completed the biannual bridge inspection, got a couple guys on site on April twenty-fourth. Um, so that's been completed and that report has been submitted to the DOT, so outside of that, has any questions for me?
Oh, the report on the bridge, go.
I didn't look at it personally, um, we had some staff, some structural staff come from our local offices, um, I think it's pretty much for the most part, I think it's kind of the norm, it's pretty much the bearings and the beams underneath. The surface itself isn't bad, the streets surface itself isn't terrible, I mean, there's not really hardly any cracks or chips. Um, but the biggest thing is the bearings and the beams underneath.
And the corners of the sidewalks.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I only got them there with ladder and stuff and, and I like that, the west end is a little hairy, I didn't get enough under, but Ethan's little night turn trail there. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim, did you have anything else to add tonight?
Uh, we have received three, uh, submissions for the request for qualifications on our comp plan, uh, update. Wondering if there's any council members would like to be on the committee to review the proposals and do the selection of. Or a representative for the council adopt.
I'll be glad, I'll be glad.
Okay. I, I have a little more if anyone's interested. I'm gonna ask two more coun, or two of the planes, my mission is red, so we have to file this.
Do you want your meeting?
We, we haven't got anything set yet, because I haven't got the form yet.
If you need any, we'll be down.
Okay. So, Mary Ann and Bill, all right? Uh, please place on your calendar, May twenty-eighth. Uh, that's a Wednesday, Mary. Uh, it's a Wednesday morning. Uh, we are hosting Wednesday morning coffee with Legion. That's the Wednesday after Memorial Day.
You went to hand it, you said that was again at six thirty?
I knew it was six thirty.
A M?
A M.
When you have coffee.
Six thirty A M. Six thirty eight A M is what what would they have that?
And they're pretty religious at six thirty.
Yes, they are.
I would just think that's my one day off a week. I'm gonna sleep now, but I guess not.
So if you don't mind, I said we'll be hosting that. Please, please join us there. Also, if you place in your calendars, Monday, June sixteenth. Uh, that is the third Monday of the month. We will do our fail setting follow up. I met with Nikki Schultz last Friday to go over things and then we still need to get some rules identified and follow up on. So this is what we'll do that starting at five P M. We'll be here at the city council chambers. And uh, just I expect the uh, RFQs or presser proposals on West Marion Street Bridge, they're due at the end of the month and then I'll need a selection committee to work on that at that point. So I'll bring it back to you then.
Okay. Anything else? All right, Aaron?
Uh, we completed the first payroll and A D P last week. I appreciate the council's patience with council packets because uh, with all of that going on, a few items got added late just due to I got a group of people paid. Um, it went pretty well. We had a few hiccups, but uh, customer service and and help with A D P is awesome. I mean, we had a problem on Friday with uh, a part-time employee's checking deposited into an old account of theirs and I was able to get on a call with them a few hours after I got ahold of them and they made the, helped me with making the correction and got it all resolved very swiftly. So um, anyway, I think it's gonna be really good. I think we're getting all the things worked out and um, employees are doing a really good job of utilizing the new system. Uh, so that's been much appreciated. The change is always kind of harder. But um, thank you for the council, for your support on that, because I do think it's gonna be good moving forward.
Thank you, Anne, for you.
Okay, um, Brian?
Uh, the only thing I have is I've had several calls on uh, the private swimming lessons. Uh, the way that's done as far as them having a head towel and uh, in the wall, they, I had one, one lady that reached out to Dyersville. Dyersville does everything online. Um, they're wanting to know why we can't give it the program. Um, they were they were not happy with how it's done through this one or currently. And they would like to know if we can give it a program and get something done online where uh, you know.
I know Doug has looked at options um, that are cost effective and that will work. Um, just finding the right program. We did, we did transition to that for group swim lessons a couple of years ago. That has been working well. Uh, you know, the hard part is with privates is uh, people are very specific in the times they want and, you know, are we gonna run into issues with you being able to log in at the same time as Joe, at the same time as Linda? And you know, the computer crashes or something, what might happen? So that's been a little bit of the hesitation is why I make sure we have a good software program. I think Dyersville uses Tyler Technologies. I'm now a hundred percent on that. Um, and that, you know, we wanna keep it cost effective as well. Um, I will say, people show up, the first person to show up and sign up was at five P M last Wednesday. First person was there at seven fifteen A M. The next day, we still had littlest of lessons left in each session. The lining up that early. I understand if you have some schedule constraints, but it's really not needed because we do wind up with plenty of lessons. We still have lots of openings here and off.
So I'm here at one side. So I
Yeah. Yeah, and I know he continues to do that because we'd also like to get uh, secret hall rentals and uh, the parking lot rentals online as well, just to make it easier for um, residents. It'd be nice to be able to figure out a software program that could do all of those instead of having to do one here in Active Network, which is where we do our rec lesson and our group swim lessons and having to do a different one for each cell.
Right.
I know he continues to investigate it.
Yeah.
But yeah, we will pass that along and keep working.
Yeah. So I
Okay, Linda?
Yeah, those are good. Yeah.
Ryan?
Uh, Wednesday, I worked with seventeen high school seniors from West Delaware. Uh, Doug was kind of in charge of senior workday for the city, what they were doing to the city. They had three different groups out. There was one group that was at the pool. There was another group that was at the um, compost area, that kind of thing. And then we had them up on park. Uh, we had seventeen seniors. When they got off the bus, I was a little concerned because they gave me sixteen girls and a boy. But I have never seen kids work part of them. These seventeen kids were. We were so proud of them. They planted two trees. They dug up two trees that will be in the way if we put up the new shelter at Bon Park, replanted those trees, which meant moving trees. They cleaned around all the trees in the park. They mulched them all. They mulched two and a half playgrounds. That was in an hour and a half. Now you tell me those kids weren't working. They were working their little tails off. I was so proud of them. It was so much fun to see these kids and see them care about their city. It was really, second thing I know. Um, and on May twenty first, it is the great gift day promotion that we're gonna be doing. Um, it will be out at Stearnstein. It's the twenty first, four to six. There's gonna be food available to buy. Uh, there's an ice cream truck that's coming in. Johnny, Daryl and Jackie are gonna be singing. But what the huge thing is is to give money. The idea is that we are going to be asking for money for different organizations and you can go around and talk to these organizations, see who needs the money. And then hopefully give them money for their different organizations. The one that I personally will be working for is the Manchester Childbearing. But there are others there. But I'm talking not just to the council, I'm talking to everybody. Please use this as in a way to give back to the community. This is a wonderful thing to do.
It's going into the end.
Right. Thank you, Jim. That's what I was gonna say, I guess. So anyway, um, yeah, I really encourage people to come, see what's possible and bring your checkbooks.
Awesome. Joe?
Uh, Wednesday, I believe it was, I went up to the brush dump and had the ability to watch a bunch of what I believe to be the high school wrestling team. Based off of the faces I seen and knowing a few of them, um, doing all that mulching work out there and just wanted to give them guys props, everybody involved in that, including the city staff that had to supervise, we will call it, um, as they were doing that. And then also I wanted to uh, follow up on the Facebook post I made about the dog park. Um, I've seen a lot of Facebook traffic on people taking their dogs out there and just wanna give them guys a shout out and congrats on all the hard work that they've done to get all that put together, even with some of the kickbacks on.
Thank you, Bill?
Um, I only think goes to Jason because I have about eighteen people a day ask me. And I keep telling them the same thing. East Main Project is starting after through the result.
Yep, that's the last word we got. They did come in ten days ago and lowered the man.
Yes, I saw that.
They had a day where they're looking for some help or they're looking for some work for the guys. They came in and got all the structures out of the way. And so they'll be ready to mend it as soon as, as soon as they
approximately June first. Give or take.
Yeah.
So, okay, no, I thought I got it.
Okay.
And I would not, like, when we release this for the cleaners for the block above at high school, north of high school, I definitely, that will be a after shoot for sure too. And I'll follow you. That's the other good idea, but it will definitely be.
And everybody just keeps asking me about East Main and I keep telling them, we're waiting for schools to get out, you know?
The last that we got from, I think when Tim, they did the airport letting uh, Jay hold him, I think. The the best answer he has was schools up. I got a feeling that maybe what they're doing is trying to do it at the same time they're doing the wedges off the the uh, old highway twenty out here, the asphalt coming off the end of that. So I'm thinking they're probably wanting to try to lay into town about the same time, so they're gonna open and out. It's my guess.
Thank you.
All right, um, I don't have anything to follow up except I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit, Aaron, Tim. Um, can you tell me how much do we pay back annually roughly on debt?
It's roughly around a million dollars.
Million two.
Million two every year we pay back. I just want to get that clarified. Okay.
All right, um, with that, it's six o'clock. I'll take a motion from Joe, uh, second from Mary Ann. We are adjourned and we are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.